All right, thank you everybody. Thank you everybody. Okay, the first thing I want to do is I wanted to thank David Price and Dan Ryan and Steve Benchick and the Airport Museum, Museum of Flying for letting us hold this event here. It's so generous, it's so nice, and it's so classy and beautiful in here. So, Dan is back there and Steve next to him. Thank you very much. All right, the next thing, Fosmo, this is official Fosmo business. We're going to have a general meeting for all of them who want to attend who are part of Fosmo on Thursday, October 18th, 7:00 PM. The site is Justice Aviation and the main topic there is going to be the City Council action and the landing fees. The City Council meets on October 23rd, which is a Tuesday, just following that meeting that we're going to put together. And we'll discuss all that goes on at that meeting. Questions? Everybody has a piece of paper on their seat if they have any question, all right? When you write your question down, please make it clear and concise. We'll make every effort to make sure it's heard, but you know, time is of the essence, so please don't run on because we do have a hard stop time of 7:00 PM. And we'll have you pass it to the outer aisle and we'll collect it and hand it in to the moderator so that they can do it. All right? And before we get started, the candidates. Thank you all for coming. You've been very generous to be here. Thank you very much. And I am finished. This is our moderator, John Rosenberg, who is completely responsible for making this happen. He never had gray hair until last week.
Thank you, Robbie. Um, so we have a lot of ground to cover and we have a format that is going to keep us fairly tight and concise. And I know there's a lot of information that everybody's going to want to get out, but we're going to keep it to one-minute opening statements from all of the panelists. And then we have a series of questions that will both come from what was pre-prepared and then also from the audience, as Robbie said, that will pass in their cards. And those questions will be asked in groups of three. We'll go basically down the line and those questions will be directed at the first three candidates and the next two candidates and so on. And using those responses, it will be limited to one minute. Pam Choi has two cards here. One is for a 10-second notification and then the red card, which is when that minute is up. And we'll ask that you guys respect that and sometimes if it goes over, I'll be sure to chime in and let you know the time's up. So with that, um, and, I'm sorry? Oh, right. In conclusion for it, everybody will be given one minute to speak on any topic they wish, including those questions that they might have heard that were directed at them but they wanted to provide a response to. So why don't we start with Ms. Davis and your opening statement and we'll go straight down the line.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sherri Davis and I'm running for City Council. And when I decided to run for City Council, I can tell you, I did not know how intense the emotions around the issue of Santa Monica Airport would be. And I find myself in an interesting position. I actually come from a family of aviators. My father was a pilot in the Navy. He flew F-4s and was in the Navy for 30 years. My brother is also a veteran of the Navy and now flies for American Airlines. My sister has her pilot's license. My grandfather was able to bring his family into a middle-class way of life by working in aviation as well and was a pilot himself. So I've grown up around aviation and around planes in this community with such emotion about the airport. I have friends and I have friends and families with kids who have been pleading about the airport issue. So I'm looking forward to this evening's forum to have more dialogue and to have more understanding and collaboration.
Good evening. My name is Ted Winter. I'm currently Vice Chair of the Santa Monica Plane Commission. I look at the SMO operations and I see something that loses money every year for the taxpayers of Santa Monica on the operational side of about 100,000 a year, plus millions of dollars of capital improvements. At the same time, I see the effects of the toxic fumes that come out of the airplanes that are spread over a city, the lead and the add gas, the, you know, rarely refined poop, the oil that comes out of the jets. I see the safety risk. We have a crash a year out of SMO and I see the noise disturbances. I don't see any reason why we should continue the status quo come 2015 when the FAA agreement expires. I would encourage everybody in this room to seek ways to radically restructure the SMO operations so that the city doesn't lose money on them, the taxpayers don't subsidize the airport, and so that the effects of the airport on the residents are mitigated. If that can't happen, then I advocate for closing the airport.
Must have been something I said that would want me to sit next to you. My name is Gleene Davis and I'm currently the Mayor Pro Tem here in Santa Monica because I've been on the council since 2009. I have very good familiarity with the issues surrounding the airport. For me, the issues regarding the airport are very simple and that is that the neighborhoods surrounding the airport do not perceive the airport as being a positive in their community. They view it, I think, as Mr. Winter said, as a source of pollution, a source of noise, a safety threat. For me, the question is, is there a way to manage the operations at the airport, curtail them in such a way that we can go back to the way things were when I moved to Santa Monica in 1986? When I moved here 26 years ago, the airport was not an issue. And what has happened over time is with the rise of fractional ownership of executive jets and things like that, airport operations have significantly changed. So what I'm looking for is a way that we can permanently make the airport a better neighbor to the neighbors around it and therefore solve everyone's problem.
Good evening. My name is Tony Vasquez and I'm also a resident here in Sunset Park. And I've been in the area since, or at least my family's been in the area since the 50s. But I've been a homeowner in the flight pattern since about 84. And actually, that's one of the reasons I'm looking to get back on the council. I was in the council in the early 90s and I'm looking forward to be on the council again as the agreement comes up in 2015. Because I think we definitely need to figure out a way to, one, curtail the hours of operation. You know, I always understood when I bought my place that this was a recreational airport, not a commercial airport. And I think many times it feels like it's been operating more like a commercial airport. So I'm hoping as we discuss and have this conversation today, we can get a better understanding and hopefully figure out a way, if there is a way, to continue. And if not, I think we need to obviously take into consideration the residents of Santa
My name's Terrence Leder and thank you very much for inviting us here. This is really a beautiful building here and such a great space. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Monica. As I grew up playing on Little Rogers Playground, they were moving cargo out of McDonald Douglas in something they called a guppy, which I haven't seen any of those take off lately. But the idea that I'm a uniter, not a divider. I believe in the heritage of our, our community and how, if, in the future, whether it be 50 or 100 years from now, that the airport is closed, what are we going to do with that 227 acres? I don't want to see another Playa Vista. I would like to see the airport stay here. The idea that its significance for security and for emergency use is absolutely valuable. So thank you very much.
Richard McKenna. This is my first time running for the City Council. I'm currently Plane and Commissioner in the City of Santa Monica. And I do have a lot of affection for aviation. I was born and grew up in Papua New Guinea and in parts of Australia where the only thing that connects the country are planes that fly and very, very old planes. And I appreciate the role of aviation, but there is a time for change and so tonight I can't make you that happy. I think that this airport needs to be run commercially. It needs to be not subsidized by the City of Santa Monica. I think we need to ensure that as we move towards 2015, the City of Santa Monica is moving to take back its Western addition. And if in due course the airport closes, I would regret that on the impact on the people in this room, but it would cause me not a great deal of concern for the people of Santa Monica. And so under those circumstances, I may have a diametrically different point of view from you. I will be interested to hear your thoughts, but I do start from that committed position.
Hi, my name is Armin Melkonian. I'm also running for City Council, of course. I'm a engineer and we were asked here, my, let me just let you know, my gut feeling for sure is that the airport does not belong in Santa Monica. Fosmo put on this event, which is a fantastic event for the, for the, for the members of Fosmo, but we were asked to come here with an open mind. I did promise that I would come here with an open mind. I just want to say that knowing that this forum is close to the public, the press, it kind of closes my, my mind from a typical engineer, open mind, to about a pinhole. So thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is John C. Smith. I'm a former news producer at Channel 4 News. My newscast won the Emmy for Best Newscast four years in a row. Like Sherri, my family, my, I grew up in Seattle. My dad worked at Boeing. He was an Air Force pilot, won the Distinguished Flying Cross. Aviation's always been a part of my life. I tend to think that it's not so much what I think about what should be done with the airport. It's not so important, but everybody up on the stage thinks about what should be done with the airport. The bottom line is, what matters is what the city, the people of Santa Monica want to do with the future of Santa Monica Airport. I favor some kind of, whether it's closure or limited, I am going to, as a City Council member, represent the people of Santa Monica as all of us should if we're lucky enough to be elected. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Fosmo. My name's Jerry Rubin. My wife Marissa and I lived in the Ocean Park area for many, many years. A long-time activist. I go to all the council meetings. Council's going to be fine whether I get on or not. I wish this forum would have been open. My brother Bob works for NASA. He's a pilot. When he heard this was going to be closed, he said, "That's outrageous." They should find a respectful way to have your meeting and still include the public. I feel bad that my brother Marty was excluded singularly. Even the mayor of Santa Monica wouldn't have been able to be in. There's room to put in a few chairs. I think the airport should be closed except for this fine museum and emergency access. And I support that. I think the land could be used for open space, recreational facilities for kids, art, affordable housing, an environmental center, roads that'll alleviate the traffic and so much more that will benefit our economy. I'm not against planes other than like this location.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Duran. I'm also running for City Council. Couple of things. I'm a father and a lawyer and I live in the Ocean Park area. And before I get into anything else, I want to say I walked in here and the coolest thing was seeing that James Bond plane because I remember that movie. I can't tell you which movie it was, but I just thought that was the coolest plane when I was like 10, 11 years old. There it is. Having said that, I have gone on the record as saying that I thought and I think that this airport should close. And I'll take just a second to explain my reasons why. Maybe through our dialogue, we can find compelling reasons to discuss, but my standpoint is, as I said, I live in the Ocean Park area. Safety has become my number one concern for my children and being right underneath the flight pattern, that's a concern of mine. Noise is also an issue that we have to deal with daily, not as serious as a safety issue. But it's, that's the angle that I'm coming from at this point. I hope we can have an interesting dialogue tonight and learn some things. Thank you.
Hi, Frank Gruber. I moved to Santa Monica in 1983 into Ocean Park. I'm also one of the candidates here who believes that the airport should be closed. It's funny, my connection with aviation is that I have a cousin who was in the Air Force about 35, 40 years ago and he crash-landed a plane in West LA when it ran out of gas. It was a rental plane and the gas gauge was messed up coming into San Marcos. First time I heard about it. But since I moved into Santa Monica, which was after the 1981 resolution to close the airport, all I've heard for that whole time is that after 2014, we would be able to close it. The reasons I want to close the airport are, are the, to deal with the environmental effects, but that's not the main reason. The main reason is that I want the land back for public use.
Thank you very much for those statements. We'll go to the Q and A phase now. Again, we'll do it by threes, so each question is going to be directed to each three of your groups. And again, at the end, we can come back if someone wanted to address a question specifically. But I'll start again with Ms. Davis. Actually, before I ask a question, I want to ask a question of the entire panel and just by a way of show of hands, how many of you have actually ever experienced flight via general aviation? All right, Sherri. A O P A recently shared with the city a scientific poll that was taken across the entire city and it addressed all kinds of issues that are facing the City of Santa Monica. More than 66% of respondents either supported the airport's continued operations or were neutral on the issue. Additionally, when they were asked to rate the priority of their concerns, rate the priority of their concerns for the city, the airport was 16th of 18th of those top priorities. What do you think are the biggest issues facing the city and what would be your top five priorities if you were elected?
So actually, I was well aware of the poll because I was actually one of the respondents and remember it taking a very long time. And I would love to see actually all the data from the poll. And I did get the memo that, and the letter that explained the, the result of the polling. As I mentioned in my opening statement, my top priorities are not related to the airport. I'm running because I think Santa Monica is a city that does a great job at innovating and having the resources to provide programs to all of its citizens. And I want to make sure that we can continue being that city. And I come from 10 years being an education advocate in our community, which I think is one of the issues that brings our whole community together. Education is a top priority, sustainability is a top priority, affordable housing is a top priority. So those are the things that I will focus my time on as a City Council member.
Thank you very much. Mr. Winter?
I have looked at these cities by annual resident satisfaction survey and tried to understand what issues have greatest concerns to Santa Monica's. And I've also been walking around and knocking on doors and asking and going to forums. It's my belief that pretty much everybody has concerns about traffic. You don't meet a lot of people that think you need more traffic. So fairly unanimous sentiment about that. People are reading a lot about the budget problems of other cities. I see in California, they're filing for bankruptcy, having to lay off police, et cetera. The people concerned that Santa Monica, while by comparison is, is fiscally robust, has had to, had to cut back and they want to make sure that we have a strong city budget with enough revenues to provide for the public safety and other social services. They're concerned about development and the way it might potentially change the character of the town. They're still concerned about homelessness, even though we've made progress on that issue. And they're concerned about the affordability of housing in the town.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. So let me address the issue about the fact that a scientific poll may have in fact shown that the airport was not a high list for the, if you poll the city citizens as a whole. And that may in fact be true, but as a City Council member, I can tell you, while we certainly need to take the needs of the whole city into account when making decisions, we also sometimes are faced with issues that address the concerns of a particular neighborhood. Just this last Tuesday, we addressed the issue of party houses because there was a party house on La Mesa. I suspect your poll probably wouldn't have shown that party houses were a big deal. But for the people on La Mesa, it was a big deal. And I think that's the issue that's facing the airport right now, is that while for the overall residents of the city, the airport may not be the number one or number five issue, for certain people who live under the glide path, it is an issue. For people who have to endure the takeoff of jets and they're pretty doggone noisy, who hear a lot of propeller planes doing pattern flying on the weekends and find that it interferes with their quiet enjoyment, or that's their perception, it is a big issue. So I think while it may not be one of my top five priorities in terms of things I want to do in the next four years, we're going to have to deal with it because 2015 is coming. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, for the second question, the next three candidates. The Airport Noise and Capacity Act restricts all airport operators from enacting new operational restrictions without first performing a 10- to 15-year study. What are your thoughts on the act and how it applies to Santa Monica's legal requirements with respect to CASL operations? And just as an addendum, are you aware that if the 84 agreement with the FAA expires or is breached, the city would no longer be able to enforce its curfew of flight operations?
Yes, that actually, starting with the back end of your question, I'm aware of the curfew because that's actually been one of my concerns. And in talking actually to some of the pilots during your open house a couple of weeks ago, they informed me that we need to be careful because those agreements, when they expire, could just open up a floodgate in terms of curfew. And I'm very concerned about that because for me, that's been one of my primary issues is that find a way to bring it back and actually have stricter controls than we currently have. Because to me, I always thought it was supposed to be a recreational airport. And for me, recreational hours shouldn't be until 11:00 in the evening. It should be more like 9:00 o'clock. When I, at least when I was coaching little league, I couldn't start up a baseball game at 11:00 in the evening. And on the flip side, too, on the morning side, I couldn't be out there at 7:00 in the morning either. So I'm hoping there's a way that we can work that out prior to 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Leder?
All right. Terrence Leder here. I'm, I'm here to, to hear heard facts. I'm here, I, I want to hear what's, I've heard a lot of urban myth, I've heard a lot of supposed facts about what's going on with the airport. I know one thing for sure, that we have restricted airspace because of Santa Monica Airport. And if indeed it was closed, there would be, the traffic would be a whole lot more. I don't know the exact amount that's, that would be expected, but without the restrictions, every, all the other airports would be able to use this as their, their flight space. And I mean, there, there is a, a lot of concern for me, once again, about the fact that this is a necessary security avenue for cargo planes to get medical supplies in and to get, to, to get people out of here in the case of the freeways going down, the highways going down. This would be the one way to, to get people in and out. So that's my focus.
Clearly, I want to move forward with downsizing the airport and capping the number of movements and then assessing the situation, whether or not we move on to full closure. And in doing so, we need a very clear strategy that does not breach rules, regulations and pieces of legislation that would adversely affect that. So I will advocate that we move in a very structured, focused and strategic way forward and ensure that we do not inadvertently breach and trigger adverse conditions which would impact upon us. And therefore, we will look to advice to ensure that we can move forward in a structured way towards the eventual capping of the airport and as I say, assessment of closure.
All right, thank you. For the next group. Yeah, notice, if you guys are writing questions down, you're welcome to pass them up to the front. We will, we will get to those, the time permitted. The, the date of expiration of the 94 agreement is between the city and the FAA is obviously the subject of disagreement. The city maintains that it expires in, in 2015 and the FAA argues that that's 2023. What do you believe should happen after 2015 if the agreement does in fact expire at that time? And specifically, do you agree with the city's moves creating a mass expiration of airport building and hangar leases in 2015?
About an hour and a half before the meeting, I even was able to print up about this much material. So there's a lot of stuff to go through. But for sure, my stance would be that if the 2015 expiration does legally hold, my stance would be to close the western portion of the runway to limit the jets from landing 100%. In terms of the airport being, my ultimate goal would be to close down the, the entire airport, to work with the FAA to either purchase the property, the remaining parcel, or go into some kind of a joint project with it. The, if the airport were to remain open, however, recreational airport to me does mean flight schools. So that would have to go along with it.
Hi, John C. Smith. You know, the 2023, 2015, the bottom line is this. The FAA is going to fight the City of Santa Monica no matter what the City of Santa Monica tries to do to the airport, whether we try to close it altogether or limit some of the flights. Clearly, people that live near the airport deserve the chance to live in a healthy and safe environment. I don't care if you live right next to the airport or you live down on Fourth and Montana. You deserve the right to live safely near home. Their concerns are genuine. That being sa, that being said, I think some people that favor closure might have an ulterior motive. And what I don't want to see happen is the airport closed and some type of big 2,000, several hundred mega list of kind of project be built on the land. If the airport is closed, it should be a city resource. I don't want to trade one problem for another and I think that a limited-use airport would be a lot better option than a mega development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, that was three answers to that question. So we have a new question, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. My, it's my fault.
The next question probably would have been better.
Thanks, John. Well, first of all, I, I just want to say, to the surface, you're talking about two years old, now people really make this a number one concern. I think everybody knows that. And the air traffic controller said if the airport was closed, it wouldn't affect the commercial north-south traffic over the airport. So I want to be careful about saying that. As far as the agreement, I'll let the marshal, military and the lawyers figure that one out. They're the legal minds. All I know is the community really would like to see that happen. I know the FAA is a tough one, but I think you guys do need to be sensitive to the people that are around there. You don't want to see someone have to move out of their house. That's not fair to ask people to do that. It's not a good location to have this airport. And I'm not worried about Playa Vista being there. I know friends of Sunset Park and other neighborhood groups will make sure that doesn't happen. So I'm not going to say, "Well, keep the airport because I'm afraid of what might be there." We wouldn't ever have a Playa Vista. Thank you.
All right, now for the next question. Are you familiar with the Engineered Material Resting System, which is otherwise known as EMAS, Safety Propole? And the controversy surrounding the offer by the FAA to pay for the installation of the system? In the past, the city's refused to take additional monies from the FAA for safety-related improvements here at the airport. Would you be open to receiving those monies if they were offered to the city again?
I mean, obviously, I would not want to take the money if it meant that the FAA would say that tax on another 20 years for the amortization. I think the FAA is a little hypocritical about this because on one hand, they're telling us when we have all that allegation that the airport is perfectly safe, but then they're saying, "But here, do these things or let us buy out the houses of people who live here, kick them out of their houses and that'll make it safer." So I just don't kind of buy the reasoning. I mean, it just seems that whatever they're doing is to try to keep the airport going and I think the airport, as I said before, no longer fits. And I have to say, I come to this kind of sadly because I'm a student of the history of Santa Monica. I think the most important person in the history of Santa Monica was Bette Donald Douglas. And people forget that Santa Monica really grew up as an industrial town, not as some kind of leaky suburb or funky beach town that people talk about. We were really, industry was our thing and aircraft was it. But I think, you know, when Douglas, we didn't extend the runway in 70 and they, McDonald Douglas moved and then the FAA forced us to have jets here, I think it became inevitable that the airport would close. And now it's a big opportunity for the city to get the most incredible urban park in Southern California.
Sherri?
Oh, I thought we were going to the other question. I'm not familiar with the system. I don't know what it would do. I don't know how badly it's needed. I would actually love, love to hear from pilots and those operating the airport, what exactly. I would actually love to hear from pilots and those operating the airport, what exactly its benefits are. I would be open to the system, but I'm very well aware that accepting anything from the federal government, any funds, would extend the life of the airport. And I don't think it's time to start banning the buyers and accepting things that will create even more problems in the community for those who would like to see the airport closed. I think we need to take the information that you guys have given us. It's an amazing amount of information and information that I, as a candidate, had not seen before. Some of it I had seen as I looked at all of the information on the airport visioning processes, all the different phases. But I think it's, we need to kind of go back to ground zero with the community and try to get information out that's balanced and have people really understand the issues.
Thank you. Next question. Flight schools provide recurring training to ensure pilots are flying safely. Several on-field businesses also make KSMO their home and provide jobs and tax revenue for the city. What is your position on flight training at Santa Monica and on the future of the many businesses that make the airport their home?
Well, there's some people in Sunset Park who've done a very thorough analysis of the traffic that we get over at Santa Monica, the air traffic. And according to them, going out and hanging out, looking at the plane identification numbers, 60% of our air traffic comes from the flight schools. I hear what you say about it creates jobs and generates revenues, but I, in fact, to my original point, it's a taxpayer expense for subsidizing operations here. And I don't know how many people in this room would appreciate taxpayers subsidizing other businesses. So I feel that the flight schools, certainly the idea of having new pilots flying across our residential neighborhoods, across our schools, I don't think you would want to have drivers in your backyard where your kids are playing. I think it's a great risk to the community. I think there are other ways for pilots who are at SMO to keep up with their training without having a flight school in place.
Thanks. I'm about to say something that's probably against my vested interest because my son wants to learn to fly. I do think it is problematic having the flight schools here at KSMO. It's very different than out of Van Nuys or Chino or Almonte, all airports that I've flown in and out of with my stepfather who owned a Piper Charity. And they don't have the density of residential development near the runways that we have here in Santa Monica. And I think that creates a real problem with the pattern of flying the touch-and-goes and all the maneuvers that student pilots need to make in order to become safe pilots. I certainly think we need to have flight schools to promote airport safety and pilot safety. My stepfather used to always say when a light plane went down, "Should have taken another lesson." But I think the problem is that we have a unique situation here. If you look at Google Maps of almost any other general aviation airport in the United States, the density and concentration of residential around this airport is greater than it is at almost any other. And for that reason, I think that we should ask people who want to learn to fly to fly in and out of general aviation airports that do not have that kind of density around them. So I would be in favor of not renewing the leases for any of the flight schools.
I too, I think, would have to echo that. You know, as, like I said, as a homeowner right just down the street here, I'm really concerned about the touch-and-goes and the current flight schools that are currently operating here. But I am definitely in support of, especially now until 2015, depending on what happens, to make sure we do whatever we can to provide as much safety and service as we can to the current pilots that are here.
All right, next question, Terrence. If you were elected, would you be in favor of spending more money from the city's tax-supported treasury on legal fees challenging the position of the FAA on the 1994 agreement? And if that were to be the case, how much do you think is an appropriate amount to spend of those funds?
Well, I think it's interesting, Terrence Slater, once again, and I think that one of the issues that have been talked about is how it's been running at a deficit and the millions, millions with capital, millions have been spent by our city to fight the federal government. And have they made even the smallest accomplishment for the citizens of Santa Monica? I'm running for representing the citizens of Santa Monica, and it's been crazy. They have let the 57-year tradition of the nativity fold up like a lawn chair without spending 1% of what they've gone after the airport for. There has been more fatalities in the last six months, maybe 90 days, than there has been from what's happened in the Santa Monica Airport in decades. So that's why I'm looking for hard facts. I'm looking for something real from the folks here to, as they're standing up on the sure bet that it's going to be more economical to continue to spend the money for the lawyers and such than it is to try a different avenue of approach and make this work with the community.
In any corporate setting, you only use litigation as the last resort to get what you can't get either strategically or through negotiation. But if we, as a city and as a people who live in Santa Monica, decide that we want to do something with this airport, then we move forward on it. If we can't achieve it, then we might need to use litigation. And of course, I'm in favor of using that weapon, if necessary, to achieve our aims. How much is appropriate, we decide that at the time. I'm not seeking to go straight to litigation with the federal government, nor seeking to go head-to-head with them. But nonetheless, it is a weapon in your armory, and there is a reason that the legal system exists.
I guess I wish I was an attorney instead of an engineer. They do make a lot of money. The, I've said my stance already. I definitely would support litigation as I see it's probably going to be the only measure. I think there is going to be some disagreements in the 2015, 2023 date. I think it's something, if I was elected as a city councilman, I would support 100%. The amount of funding, I believe, whatever it would be, would be a legitimate and reasonable expense. That's my answer.
Same question, or? I think that was three, so we'll go to the next one. And if you want to address that, you can do that down. I guess this one, this one follows up on that, so that might satisfy it. Not long ago, the city attempted to ban C and D category aircraft, but the FAA overturned what is essentially a legal action. Do you think the city acted responsibly by essentially misappropriating airport cons to litigate that issue?
Residents in mind when they took on that litigation regarding the C and D aircraft, and it didn't come out in their favor. But as a council member, a council member that I hope I can represent your interests as well as the interests of all the residents of Santa Monica, and if it comes to an issue regarding the airport or another issue, some other issue involving something in the city, and we look at all the facts and it's in the best interest of the residents to litigate, then I would support that and at whatever cost because we're here to serve the residents.
Thank you. And so the next question. Currently, there's no aviation expertise on the airport commission. It seems irresponsible for the city to take advice from a panel in which there is no resident expertise. Would you be willing to nominate and actively support one of our pilots to be on that airport commission?
That's a good question. I think it depends on the pilot. You know, if I felt that the pilot was going to look beyond his pro-protein interest as a pilot and see what the overall issues of the airport were, I would not categorically rule it out. I think we should have more representation. I'm also in favor of having a non-voting member from Los Angeles to be on the commission. I'm not opposed to different views. Ultimately, the city council makes the decisions. As I said at the, it was actually at the CRAAP forum because they had a kind of a similar question about the role of the commission. My view is that the commission should be kind of wild and crazy entity out there making ideas, and it's the city council that ultimately has to make the decisions. It should hear as many ideas as possible.
Yes, I do think there should be a pilot on the airport commission, and yes, I would support that. And I think it would be a benefit for all residents in Santa Monica to have that down on the commission.
I think it's a reasonable question to ask. I think that if you look at our requirements for our architectural review board, we require people with design background, landmarks commission, and we have various categories of professionals that need to serve in the landmarks commission. I can tell you, serving on the planning commission right now, we've been hurt by the fact that we've lost in the last year to the architects who serve us because as we grapple with design issues, we would be benefiting from their expertise. So I'm open to the idea, but I can't promise that I'm on the council automatically rubber-stamping a pilot. You would have to look at the list of candidates who applied to the airport vacancy and look at all their various qualifications. But I certainly would not say, no, we can't be in the airport commission because you're a pilot. I think it's reasonable to have a dialogue about these issues and to have various points of view.
Thank you. There we go. Do you favor any sort of increase in charges for hangars, landing fees, fuels, maintenance, food, or any other service currently being provided at the airport?
Well, I think you all know, since you have a meeting scheduled in connection with this agenda item, that on October 23rd, the city council will be considering whether or not it can increase landing fees at the airport, and if it can, whether in fact it should. I haven't seen the staff report yet, and so I can't promise what I think the council should do. I need more information and don't have sufficient information to say, to decide how I'm going to vote on that yet. I do think that, and this doesn't just go for the airport, it goes for the pier, it goes for a lot of other enterprise funds, the Big Blue Bus, the Woodlawn Cemetery. We are looking to all of our enterprises to pay their own way. And the reason we're doing that is because in these difficult economic times, the city really doesn't have the money to subsidize a lot of things that are very good within the city. You know, for me, I think the biggest issue at the airport is less about what this fee is or what that fee is. The question for me is, how do you come up with a sticky solution? And I think that everybody needs to work together, the pilots, the people who live in nearby neighborhoods, our local government, to try and come up with a situation that's going to not only make the airport self-sufficient, but also simply make it a better neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes, I think I would be supportive of it. I don't know what the fee is, if it's a reasonable fee. I would definitely be open to that discussion with many of you that are obviously on the other end of this. But like I think was mentioned earlier, you know, there's several things that we provide for our residents now that, given these economic times, are not going to be free that they happen, in fact, whether it's wrecking parks, the airport, other social services. You know, I think we've been spoiled for many, many years. And I even see that even within our own staff in terms of even health benefits. You know, those costs are constantly going up. And as we see cities around us, you know, folding or going bankrupt, we need to take those issues into consideration.
Oh, okay. I can't be trusted, I don't count well, but.
Did you repeat the question that I was, I guess?
Certainly. If elected, would you favor any sort of increases in charges for hangars, landing fees, fuel, maintenance, food, and the other services that are currently provided at the airport?
Well, we're, Terrence Slater, we're working with a city here that has a $247 million unfunded pension liability. The idea that managing the city's money is something that these guys are going to have some challenges with downtown. I would look for, over any possibility that whatever should be managed more efficiently, but as far as penalizing one area because of somebody's, you know, unpopularity with a certain area in town and then, you know, letting somebody else off the hook somewhere else is not really my idea of how the city should work. It's really very important that we look at all fiscal responsibility across the board. The city council seems to trip over dollars to get to diamonds around here.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this last question. Is it essentially a yes or no question of everybody? And then we'll move to the questions from the audience. And this is a bit of a dogmatic question, but I think you understand why. If you're elected or re-elected to the city council, would you pledge to use scientific analysis and expert testimony as the basis for your decision-making on all matters facing Santa Monica?
Yes.
I don't think it's a yes or no question. I'll say no.
Yes. The answer's yes.
Of course, expert test, testament of a community input is important as well.
You know, as an attorney, you're trained to bring in all the facts and look at everything and have the judge decide. And so this would be part of that. I would want to, yes, this is the answer.
Yes.
Don't forgive me.
Oh, sorry. Ted handed me the microphone, I just couldn't resist.
To the extent the issues depend upon scientific analysis, yes. But politics and political decisions about the future of cities depend a lot more than the scientific analysis.
Sure.
You're right.
I agree with Frank Ruber.
I believe that scientific analysis certainly should come into play, particularly when we're talking about things like health and safety and environment. There are other areas that are perhaps science is less important, like when you're talking about open space and the needs of our residents.
Tell me what you need, Tom.
Thank you. Yes, I would, definitely. I think we need to have all the facts.
I think it's really very important to have studies and have hard facts, yes.
Thank you. I apologize for the nature of that question. Okay, so these are questions that have gotten from the audience, so forgive me as I get through the handwriting. Would you be willing to support a city-funded poll of the entire city population to determine whether airport closure is favored by a majority of the residents as opposed to a vocal minority? And would you abide to the results of that poll?
It's fine if we want to run a poll of citizens of the city, that gives us an indication of how a majority of the people of the city are feeling. But ultimately, we run a poll every two years. It's called an election, and then the city council is charged with making decisions. That's how our government runs. And you get the chance to change the people that run the government every two years. You don't like it, you throw them out. You've got that option this coming up. And so what I am clear in saying to you is that if I am elected, you know what I will do, and therefore you have the option of voting for me or against me. Otherwise, government becomes unworkable, and we see that time and time again. And clarity in government is a very important thing. So the answer is, it doesn't really matter if we run a poll of people. Ultimately, it is what the city council decides, and you know what I will do.
I'm going to make this easy with not the same accent. I agree.
That's it, man. Hi, John C. Smith. You know, Richard, we share growth issues. We feel the same way about responsible growth. But I think a poll, actually, I've written that down, it would be nice to know, two years from now, November of 2014, exactly how the city as a whole feels about the airport issue. And I mean, I know how many of you feel in this room. I know how many pollers in the friends of Sunset Park feel about the airport. But it would be, I think it'd be helpful to, not just a poll, but maybe a referendum, a vote on citywide on how citizens feel about the airport. After all, we're supposed to act on behalf of the citizens. Would I stick by that vote? I think I have to act. Green Davis mentioned this earlier. Sometimes, the interests of a few people, the health and safety, if I had a two-year-old son playing I had a two-year-old son playing in the backyard and I smelled jet fumes all the time, I would be concerned about that. So sometimes the needs of a few people have to be considered along with the needs of the many. But yes, I would favor a poll and I think it'd be a good thing for the city.
Thank you. Terrence, this is another question from the audience. Santa Monica is part of the national airspace system and Santa Monica is important to transportation during fire, flood, earthquake, terrorism attacks, et cetera, emergency services, search and rescue, surveillance, charity, angel flight. Do you recognize and accept these benefits of the airport and the benefits to Santa Monica and the overall region and for that matter to the country?
Well, Jerry Rubin, as I said before, I'm not, certainly not opposed to emergency access, whether it be by plane or even possibly more effectively by helicopter. And I'm not against building a fire or response team building because like I'm not opposed to an environmental center there. And I think if the airport were closed, it would even be more effective to have those elements there for our city with access roads that come through that make it easier and add benefit emergency. But as far as the poll on this, you know, if it was done, it's not quite as adequately as the airport visioning process. Even the late Rick Brown in the commission thought it was inadequate. I'd be a little concerned about that and opening up a divisive move. Let the community groups and you and everybody speak out and go to the city council. I wouldn't open it up to just a poll because I wonder what the questions might be.
Steve Jerome, regarding the emergency, I, of course, I recognize the benefits that this airport offers for all of those services that come in through here. But it's not the only place here in Santa Monica where we can get those benefits. People often talk about emergency situations, what will happen and it's good to have an airport here. But, you know, we've got a beach and any big, big, major catastrophe, the U.S. Navy could pull right on up onto the sand and do their thing. I also know that, you know, helicopters are often used to drop stuff off. They could land in playgrounds, they could land in green spaces, they could land in parks. And so, yes, I recognize the value that the airport does have in those regards, but this isn't the only place where you can get those benefits.
Hi, Frank Ruber. First thing I would say is I'm pro helicopter, not so sure about the Navy. I guess what, the way I want to answer this is, the materials that you guys sent us were very interesting. And one of the facts that kind of jumped out at me is kind of late in the report, it says that there used to be something like 700 general aviation airports. I think in Southern California, it's down to 60 or maybe some other geographic thing. And what made, that made me realize was that this really isn't anything new, what's happening in Santa Monica. I know that saddens everybody who's into aviation, but you can't be that surprised that if we've lost something like 90% of the airports, general aviation airports in some region, that we have people here who want to close another one. I mean, that's what apparently general aviation airports have a problem with people who live around them. I think that for the emergency type stuff, there should be, there should be a helicopter type place and we work with that. We have airports around us. I think that could work, that would be the way to handle that.
All right, Terrence, the next question. Would you support an audit of the city's books to verify the airport's reported loss? The question asked here, I don't know if you answered, how much general fund expense is laid on the airport? One of the things that we pointed out in the packet that we sent is that there was some capitalized expense on the airport that seems to have crept into the analysis of what the actual P and L is of the airport. And that seems like an unfair approach since capitalized expenses are amortized over a number of years. But to that question, would you support an audit?
Well, I believe the city has an audit done every year and I would support asking the auditor to maybe take a closer look at that. But I don't think we need a separate special audit just for that. It's, numbers don't lie, I don't think. And perhaps it needs to be looked at in a particular way, but that would be what the approach that I would take is, is to ask the city's auditor, who already does the audit, to analyze it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Sherri. I think the city's financials are pretty transparent and all the numbers are there for anybody. If somebody asks a specific question about why certain data is included, I certainly think it's fair to raise that with city staff and whoever's reviewing our annual performance. But I don't think that there's a need for a specific audit of the airport enterprise fund.
You know, before we get to Green, there was a question that was specifically directed towards you, so it might be appropriate to answer. It said, if the airport would be run with no taxpayer funds as a private enterprise, would you pose it with the private enterprise paying Santa Monica lease fee?
A lease fee for the ground that the city owns?
That's correct.
No, as I said, my concerns are not only the fact that it's subsidized a taxpayer expense, but we also have to do something to mitigate the impacts, the environmental and safety impacts of the airport. So, I mean, I can foresee a possibility where the airport breaks even and we're severely reducing the jet flights in some of the flight schools and we go back to the historic gnome of the small light general aviation airport where the people concerned about it would be satisfied. But it's not just, I'm not just being a fiscal hawk on the airport. I think there also be, under very significant risk, it was by operations that close to a very dense residential area.
Yeah, I agree with Sherri and Ted in terms of the audit question, which is I don't think we need a special one. And obviously, if there are concerns about the methodology of our current audits of any of our enterprise funds. I mean, I want to make it clear that when we talk about, for example, raising landing fees, two years ago, we got huge protests when we raised the fees at the carousel on the pier because the pier needs to become more self-sustaining. That's the whole reason that we've done this, restructured the organizational oversight of the pier. So we're not picking on the airport in terms of saying, well, the airport must be self-sustaining because that's one way to attack the airport. We are asking all of our enterprise funds, as I said, the big blue bus. And what I would say is that if you believe that somehow the calculation of whether or not the airport enterprise fund is self-sustaining is being done differently. If the airport's being treated differently than Woodlawn Cemetery, the big blue bus, the pier, all of which also have capital expenditures and may be treated, if you say they're being treated differently, I think we should raise that at the time of the budgetary conferences, which are coming up early next year. And that's something that the city council should adjust. I'm all for treating everyone fairly and determining whether or not they are a burden on the city budget. I don't think the airport should be singled out as being a bad actor in that regard.
Thank you. Next question. It says, during the 1994 earthquake, the Van Nuys Airport was a lifeline to the West San Fernando Valley in disaster relief efforts. What would you say to the residents when disaster resources are delayed because the airport serving their community has been closed?
Yeah, that's a good question. I happened to be on the council when the 94 earthquake did hit. And not only was, is that something that I think we need to definitely be concerned with, but also making sure that we have, in this case, I guess, if the pilots or even emergency people like police and fire that actually live in the city. You know, most of our police and fire do not live in the city. I remember being at city hall waiting for the first respondents and they were stuck in Sealy Valley and the freeway was down. So it is very important.
Certainly, I find that, I've made that point throughout the evening, that that's one of the main reasons I would like to see the airport protected. The city is also has an emergency response center that they just spent a couple of million dollars on, of taxpayer money to, and the city manager believes that the Santa Monica Airport is critical to any of, any of that plan coordination. So for me, and it's also, it's curious, the idea that they talk about the toxins, they talk about all of that going on with the airport. And it always was a curiosity to me about how the city then put the soccer fields and the children's playgrounds in there. It always fascinates me. And as far as the audit is concerned, a couple of years ago, it was revealed to me that it was the city, we had Sam Calhoun's firm that the city of Bell had, has changed now. But if we're going to do an audit, I think we should find an independent group that would like to handle that.
Thank you, Terrence.
Safety and rescue are a complex series of interlocking ideas and all communities have different ways of being rescued. Whereas Hollywood's will be quite different to ours if they don't have an airport. So if you remove the airport, you have a different set of safety and rescue matrices. You have to bring those into account. And of course, they'll be different. I used to work in a big public hospital system and doctors would always tell me that if I didn't do A, B would follow and B was always the death of patients. And when we did A, B never followed because we changed things. It may not be exactly the same. It will be different. But safety and rescue will not suffer simply because this airport closes.
Okay, Armin, the next question from the audience was, would you be willing to fly with one of our members or pilots out of the airport to get a better understanding of the procedures that could be used to minimize impact on the community?
I think after tonight, probably no. Probably previously, yes. But I think that my concerns are really more, I think Frank said it the best, it's, I, my personal opinion is, an airport does not belong in a metropolitan city whatsoever. I'm not picking on Santa Monica. Everybody in this room obviously has some kind of aviation interest. One of my very closest friends is an airline pilot, an international airline pilot. And I enjoy the conversations with him. He actually flies out of San Francisco, but he goes to LAX and he flies to San Francisco and then he flies to either Australia or Japan. I just don't believe that airports belong in a city environment. That's my fundamental belief. Of course, I also believe that for, specifically for Santa Monica, it does, the residents do, should make the determinations. So that's why I'm wanting to speak to you.
Hi, John C. Smith. I would welcome the chance to go up with any pilot in the room for a tour. I've, actually, I went up with a pilot a couple of years ago, not out of this airport, but another airport, in an ultralight aircraft, which was a lot different than flying in a real plane. It was almost like I was flying in a hang glider with a motorcycle engine on it. You just, it's like you're in an elevator. But it was a good thrill. Hey, what really occurs to me tonight is, bottom line, a lot of people in this room tonight, we're talking about a decision that could affect your lives and your livelihood. And I think all this, you know, hanging here and there, we have to keep that in mind. Everyone in this room, everyone on this table has to keep, we're talking about lives and livelihoods. The airport clearly has a historical significance. There's an economic significance. There's a big role for Santa Monica Airport as what they call a reliever airport. I think the FAA is going to find us no matter what is going to be decided by the city council. All I can tell you is this, I'm an open-minded person, I have a background in news, and I listen to everybody and I base my decisions on facts. Thank you.
Jerry Rubin, thanks, but I would respectfully decline. I wouldn't want to be sitting in the seat of the noise-making plane going over my neighbors or the schools. I'm kind of, you know, concerned about that. I'd like to know if any one of you would like to come and hang out near my brother Marty's house where the pollution is smelling day in and day out. I'll go over and look at some of the studies that Ted Lu and other people have put together and come on a tour and come to their meetings, which aren't closed, by the way, and learn some of the information firsthand about that. That's what I'd really ask. And I hope the next forum you have will be open and that dialogue will be able to be increased with everyone because we shouldn't be enemies. And I sense a tenseness in that closed forum today.
Next question for you, Steve. And I believe we put some of this in the packet that we sent, aware that was only about 24 hours ago. But are you aware of the suggestions for improved flight operations with regard to noise management that have been made by FOSMO, specifically the infield run-up or change in departure procedures?
Yes, I am, based on the paperwork that you sent. Thank you. And I would say this, if you want some unsolicited advice and you want to show being a good neighbor, then I would say take the initiative and implement those procedures on your own. And that way, as time goes, when it gets to 2015 or prior, and the conversations happen with the city council, whether I'm on it or not, you can say, we've done these things to mitigate the noise. We understand your concerns, residents, and we're willing to work with you. I don't think you need to wait for those activities to take place. And you can actually do that and it'd be a benefit to the residents.
Frank Ruber, I basically want to echo a lot of what Steve said, but I also have to say, I read your document last night and I was really puzzled by it. Because on one hand, there was a tremendous amount of thought that went into, how can we make this better? How can we work with you and make the airport work? Now, you know, I want to close the airport for other reasons than I can directly say. I agree with what John said. It has a lot of, I know that it has a lot of implications for a lot of people. But then you also had a lot of stuff in there, let's turn Santa Monica Airport into an airport with scheduled commercial service. Turn it into like a real, you know, commercial airport, not just a general airport. That was also in the suggestions. And it just made me think that this was a kind of, you know, I don't want to say schizophrenic, but I didn't know where you were coming from. I mean, it seemed like there was a group within the group saying, yeah, we want to make, we want to make this happen. Let's work with the community. Let's lower the impact. And another group was saying, let's turn this into, you know, Burbank Southwest. And I just didn't get it.
This question is really directed at those who have stated a specific opposition to the city airport. So, Terrence, feel free to figure out how to answer this. But given your opposition to training schools at the airport, are you also supporting the proposition that drivers with learner permits can't drive in Santa Monica roads? Or is it addressing hypocrisy of the question about training?
Exactly. No, Terrence later, I would ban all permit drivers on that. Thank you very much. Pitching me that one. It's the softball question. You know, I think it just comes down to management negotiation, the idea that somehow we have, our, the legal system and our city government is challenged at best. The idea that when we, when the water was polluted, for many years, for decades, the water was poisoned. When we finally prevailed with the gas companies, there was a little clause in that, in that settlement that the legal firm got, law firm, got over a hundred million dollars of the settlement money. I think if we start looking at things, the idea of talking about the solar panels, that in 2006, I bumped into a couple of characters down on the pier, they were given a couple million dollars to study solar panels on houses. I guess some of the building guys here could eliminate the need to give somebody $2 million to come up with a solid solution at that point.
Thank you. There are some key differences between someone driving a car and someone flying a plane over residents' houses with the potential of, as we've seen over the years, significant crashes that impact not just themselves, but the people who are in those houses. And, you know, the significance of the difference is not lost on the person who asked the question either, I suspect. So the second element that we are looking at is that generally those people take off from under the control of learning to fly schools. And I don't think that's a suitable task for this airport either. The constancy of people taking off and learning, who are learning how to fly, the repetitious activity over the same houses all the time is one of the things that we're trying to stop. Because sooner or later, stop, because sooner or later, the statistical inevitability is one of those pilots will have a problem, or those learner pilots will have a problem. That is not the same as someone who's learning to drive randomly around the streets of Santa Monica.
I'm going to take a slightly different approach on that, which I mentioned in one of my answers before as well. My, again, my gut reaction is an airport does not belong in an urban setting. If I was on city council, I would use the 2015 expression to close the West Hurley Portion, but if the airport is staying, I'm not going to be a dictator on city council, and neither is any one person who's on city council, it's seven votes. The right thing to do, if the airport is staying, is a recreational airport, is to have flight, training flights out of it. That is integral with a recreational airport. So, it's integral with the safety of pilots, it's integral with a recreational airport, so I would support that aspect of it. I would like to see the airport, though, work with its neighbors to limit obvious times and the amounts of flights that are done to time periods that are more suitable as a good neighbor. Thank you.
And I guess I'll leave this last question to the four remaining candidates, and I would have modified a little bit. There are ever-advancing technologies for flight. They deal with noise, they do with the nature of the fuel that's used, which impacts the emissions. There are, as you saw in our packet, a number of suggestions that will impact, that we believe will impact the quality of life for the neighbors. The question specifically is, are you aware of the future of less polluting aircraft, less noisy aircraft, and safety, safer aircraft, and the evolution just in the past 20 years in the science of flight that has impacted all of those? And if you are aware of it, do you think it's rash to make a decision on today's technology as you see rapid improvement, or for that matter, do you not see that rapid improvement?
Thank you. John C. Smith, one question. Yes, I'm aware of the technology. A couple of months ago, I arranged to have a tour inside the airport. I wanted to see where the jets parked and go around the eastern edge of the airport. One, there is a lot, didn't we have a little demonstration two weeks ago of noise silencer jet technology at the airport? There's technologies that allow electronic starters of jets, so that a pilot that's waiting for a fare doesn't have to sit there and run the engine before the fare comes up. Certainly, in terms of noise, pollution, when I drove around the airport on the eastern end, I could actually look out and see parts of Bundy, and clearly, you know, in terms of, we all drive unleaded fuel in our cars, you would think that by now, we could have unleaded fuel for jetliners. Yes, I'm aware of the technologies, yes, they should be considered. In the grander scheme of things, when you're talking about flight schools, 60% of the flights are flight schools, that's a lot of flights, and, you know, that's something also that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Rubin, again, not against airplanes, even though I think we need more planes, more trains and less planes in California, but the future of aviation should be thinking about building new airports way out away from residential, potentially dangerous areas, and shuttling in people real quickly. We have a hard time even getting electric cars now, electric shuttles or electric buses, and the technology's way out there on these efficient fuels, and the FAA doesn't really make it easy to do anything about it. So, if people are out in these areas, and that technology is expanding, and you get a noiseless, pollution-free airplane, then maybe they could start bringing some of that stuff back to Santa Monica. Till then, no.
Yes, I am aware of the technologies that have taken place, and I'm learning more, especially running for office now. I've increased my learning on that stuff, but it doesn't change the fact that the deadline is coming up quickly. 2015, the city needs to make a decision, and we've got to be ready and prepared to do it. So, my question about technology is, will it be in a place that can provide safe flights so that a plane that's landing on top of my kids in our backyard and is emission-free, so it's not protecting, so that it's protecting the neighbors around? I mean, those are concerns that we have to answer, and I don't think that they'll be there by 2015. So, as a council member, I have to be ready to make plans on the information that we have now, and hopefully someday, it'll be there, but I don't think that it will be by that time.
Steve keeps standing, so I'll stay. As I said before, this issue is really not that relevant to my thinking about the airport, because even if jets, even if planes didn't pollute, they don't noise, we're absolutely safe, I, as a shareholder in the city of Santa Monica, as a resident here, I feel like has an ownership interest in the city, and thus has an ownership interest in that land. I mean, maybe you guys think that we're holding in a trust for the aviation people. I don't look at it that way. I feel we bought that land in the 20s, we own it, we need to put it to the best use for the public as a whole. That's what's motivating me the most. I realize that change is frightening, change is, can be, you know, very bad for people who are hit by it, and, but change happens all the time in our capitalist society, where lease owners, lease properties, lease it out, change the use of that property all the time, and that's what I see the city of Santa Monica needs to do.
All right, well, that will conclude the Q and A. We'll use the remaining time, again, almost exactly to one minute apiece, for concluding statements from each of the candidates. Feel free to say whatever you feel like, or address any of the questions that have been asked, and have at it.
Well, first, thank you very much for having this forum and for providing us the information that is very valuable as candidates for us to have, so that we are fully informed. I think a few things haven't come up tonight, and there are things that I am thinking of constantly. One of them is, what happens if the airport closes and the LAX landing pattern brings those big, huge jumbo jets 2,500 feet closer to our community? How is that going to make our residents feel? Why, as a city that is progressive and looking for ways to be innovative in a lot of other ways, let's use that reputation to really push for more quicker progress on bringing the, getting the lead out of our outgas. That doesn't mean that we don't have very serious concerns of our residents to address, and I just want to reemphasize that. I think that, as a city council member, that my, the role that I see for myself is to really bring people together and try to work out these issues.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I appreciate the civil dialogue, even though we may have to agree to disagree on certain issues that are near and dear to your heart. As I said in my open remarks, I see the airport, as it currently operates, it's now closed, being a financial drain on the city's treasury, and putting some of the, people that live here by risk through a variety of impacts. So, my position remains that unless something between now and 2015 seriously changes about the requirements for the taxpayers to subsidize the airport and some of those health and safety risks, then I think we need to look at possible higher betters for that land, as Frank put it so well, it's an opportunity for us to really augment the city of Santa Monica by putting it to different uses. However, and I'm open-minded, and if I were elected to city council, and there was ways to change the airport operations so that people in this room was to be able to fly without having those financial and health risks to the community, then I'd certainly be willing to enter candidates.
Thank you, Terrence.
I want to add my voice and thank you, everyone, for coming out on beautiful Santa Monica Saturday afternoons last evening. With regard to the airport, what I'm doing as a current city council member and hope to do if re-elected, is look for what I call the sticky solution to the airport. And by that, what I mean is a solution that's going to address the concerns and needs of residents, but also address your concerns and needs. I believe that we can reduce operations of the airport in such a way that it will still be enjoyable as a general aviation airport, and yet the concerns of residents will be addressed. It may mean lowering the number of flights in and out, it may mean moving the flight schools and reducing a lot of the patterned flying, it may mean putting some other restrictions on the airport that would still allow it to be enjoyed, but keep the airport open. I am not as despondent, I think, as some of my colleagues up here are, that we couldn't be able to, with the proper input from your group, from residents, from all the stakeholders here, work with the FAA to try and get a negotiated solution. Now, of course, if the FAA won't work with us, and if we don't maintain our cold card, if you will, of the threat to close the airport, then we might have a problem. I would certainly view closing the airport as a last resort if we could not get some sort of operational changes that would bring the airport back to being the good neighbor that it's been in the past. Thank you again.